Call this meeting to order. You all please rise for invocation by Pastor Ernst, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Shall we pray? Father, thank you for this Board of Supervisors, for our Chairman, each of the individuals that work in this great county, here in this wonderful country that we call America. We pray your mighty blessing upon them as they seek wisdom in their deliberations. Lord, help them as they make their decisions. And we pray, Father, that you would bless this county, this country. To the praise of your glory, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Need a motion to call for an executive session to be held December 6, 2021 at 9:00 a.m.?
So moved.
Have a motion second. No further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Committee your legislative report. Supervisor Angus?
I have nothing this morning. Thank you.
Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. I attended the ACJC meeting in Phoenix where I accepted the appointment to the Drug Gang Violent Crime Control Program Committee. I was also appointed to the Legislative Committee that meets during the session every other Friday to monitor or support or oppose bills that are pending. Work on this committee level is what directs and informs the work at the commission level, an important step in the overall process as the leading source for criminal justice. I also...I guess that's it. I was trying to think. I attended something else, but I don't remember what that was.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last night, I attended a rally in support of hospital workers at the Lake Havasu Hospital that are going to lose their jobs because they won't take the vaccine. When I was there, I explained to them that Arizona is not under the control of OSHA, the Federal Occupational Health and Safety Organization. Arizona's industrial safety and workplace safety is controlled by the Arizona Industrial Commission. The Industrial Commission has put out a paper that says that they are in control, not OSHA, that they have not decided whether they will do anything with mandating vaccines, and that until they do, it's business as usual in Arizona. So any employer that actually enforces Joe Biden's vaccine mandate will be breaking the law. Thank you.
Supervisor Lienfeldt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got three issues this morning, all related to water. Just an update on the responses to the Bureau of Reclamation's environmental assessment comment scoping request for the proposed GSC Farms Fourth Priority Colorado River Water Transfer to Queen Creek. The Bureau of Reclamation received a total of eight entities submitting comments against the proposed transfer to Queen Creek and further requesting a full environmental impact statement process be conducted. Those entities were La Paz County, Mojave County, Mojave County Water Authority, City of Yuma, Yuma Irrigation District, North Gila Valley Irrigation and Drainage District, and Welton Mohawk Irrigation and Drainage District. We believe now, for those that are monitoring the situation, that there will be several months of no news while the BOR works on the environmental assessment. Again, the EA is a process, not a decision. At the conclusion of the EA process, the BOR will issue a finding of no significant impact or require that an EAS be prepared. Mojave County and all other stakeholders will have the opportunity to review and comment on the EA before it is issued. The second issue is the Wallapie Tribe Federal Water Settlement. Happy to report that we will be holding the next state parties meeting today, this afternoon, actually, at 1:00 p.m. Mojave County continues to be an important partner to the Wallapie Tribe during this process, and the state parties are making good progress on draft federal legislation, which we hope will be introduced soon. And last, but not least, Mojave County West Basin Water Users Study Committee, the committee's last meeting, prior to submitting its recommendations to the state, will be held this Wednesday, November 17th, at 10:00 a.m. in House Hearing Room 1 in the Arizona House of Representatives. The committee will be debating and voting upon a total of 13 recommendations submitted by the members of the committee. The recommendations touch upon the following subjects: need for groundwater, excuse me, need for rural groundwater legislation, property rights, public participation and due process, that rural management area legislation would only apply to basins at risk with certain criteria, local RMA council, composition and governance, need for permanent RMA funding, INAs located inside an RMA, RMA governance of multi-county basins, final ADWR Director Approval Process, and RMA goal and plan tied to adopted local general plans and comprehensive economic development strategies of cities, towns, and counties located within RMA. Those proposals that pass a majority vote of the committee members will be forwarded to the state and will be incorporated into Representative Cobb's water bills next session. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. I'll submit a report on Lower Colorado River Multi-Species Conservation Program Steering Committee to get to everybody who was attended by Bill Lamb, who was our Executive Director of Quad State. County Manager's Report.
I noted no report today, Mr. Chairman.
Call to the public. Ken Works.
Ken Works, Yocca, Arizona. I just wanted to speak on the notion of principles for a moment. Principles are something that we have to have in order to drive down the road safely. Without principles, we're not going to get there safely. Try and argue the notion of principles with the DPS officer, and you're probably going to lose the argument if you could be able to engage in one. But there has to be principles, and they need to be followed, even though there's a lot of resistance to principles. They're constantly under attack. You have to have an army to enforce principles. I think that there's something that we need to stand by. We should always be prudent when it comes to just pooh-poohing principles. But I think that that's something we need to be considered of and concerned with when we're making our decisions. Thank you very much.
Chris Rodardi?
Christopher Darty, Kingman. When tyrants ask you to yield one jot of your liberty and you consent thereto, it is the first link forged in the chain that will eventually hold you in bondage. These words uttered by Sam Houston some 160 years ago are as relevant today, maybe even more so as they were back then. How could he have foreseen life in 21st century America? We in Mojave County, Arizona, are at a tipping point. Companies like Unisource Energy Services, Kingman Regional Medical Center, the county's largest employer, and Havasu Regional Medical Center are throwing down the gauntlet to their employees. On the eve of the holiday season, get the jab or lose the job. Feel the stab to feed your kids. Your body's our choice. This is not America. What are we now, Cuba, North Korea, or China? Canadian-owned Unisource and the local hospital systems need to know they are breaking the law by enforcing Biden's vaccine mandate. There are people working for the county with influence on the KRMC Board of Directors, for example. We cannot force these employers to let go of mandates, but we can make a public statement, Mojave County, denouncing their tyrannical tactics. You can speak to the unconstitutionality of it all, and you can stand with us, your constituents, and those on the verge of unemployment. How unthinkable in American society, destroying the holidays of breadwinners who refuse a shot. Fewer, if any, toys under the tree. The pure evil of taking food from a baby's mouth. Yes, Mojave County Board of Supervisors, you can stand up to the bullies, just as many Unisource and hospital employees and their supporters are doing. You can even join us out on the streets in peaceful protests against forced jabbing. Thank you, Ron Gould. You can step up and stand up and truly represent your constituency like a real public servant, or you can maintain business as usual. It's your choice. But we, the people, will continue to fight tyranny, peacefully protest, and stand up to corporate bullies with every fiber in our being. We are out here. We are not going away. And to coin the words of John Paul Jones, "We have only just begun to fight." Thank you.
Jeff Esposito?
Jeff Esposito, address on record. I'm going to start it off with a compliment. I talked about Shinnump being a wreck. And the next day, I'm driving on Shinnump, and the road department is out there doing its job. So yay, yay. Okay, so the CDC has acknowledged that approximately 146 million Americans have had COVID. They also acknowledged that those that have had it have better immunity than any vax will ever provide. Fosse just admitted that vaccines do not work as advertised, and that the vaccinated are in great danger today. Yet this county supports a health department Nazi who is pushing vaccines to children. Stop this madness. This is criminal and evil. The county is a constitutional-supporting county. The citizens of this county need for you supervisors to send a letter to Governor Ducey, I mean Ducey, sorry, and Brandon, informing them that we will not comply with mandates, passports, or any other bullshit. I thank God we survived the last two years, and I look forward to having a good chairman next year. So let's go, Brandon.
Jennifer Esposito?
Jennifer Esposito, Kingman. You don't need a weak and pathetic disclaimer to distance yourself from the propaganda being disseminated by the retard. You need to do your jobs and step up and set policy for what she can and cannot do, because you are absolutely correct that when things come from that department and it says Mojave County with the official seal, it does look like it's officially endorsed by you, because it is, even if only through your complete inability and unwillingness to act on curbing it. I don't even know how many weeks it's been since I gave you proof from the FDA that the PCR test has never and does not test for the Fauci-Franken virus. Yet, if you go to the Health Department Facebook page, it says very clearly on their fact sheet that it's based on the PCR. There isn't a fact on the fact sheet anywhere. But that is a de facto approval of rampant, ongoing fraud by this board, who is the representative of the county. So when you allow these things to continue, and you don't do your job as the board to set policy and tell the sad little man in the chair over there to implement that policy, then absolutely, it reflects 100% on you. Now, at this point, I'm considering it non-feasance. If it continues on, it's only been, what, 20 months, maybe, it becomes malfeasance. All right? Now, as of, I believe it was the 4th, the county is officially putting poison in children five years of age or older. Okay? It's right there on your website that you allow, that you approve of by default. So you, the five of you, are experimenting on children, and you should be ashamed of yourselves. Do your jobs. Hold a work session. Sit down and outline what that department will and will not do. Chris Rodardi was right when she said that there is a statute that says during an emergency, that department has crazy powers. How long has it been since you've known that, and you've done absolutely nothing to rein those powers in? I don't expect that this will be the last sort of bioweapon nonsense that we will see, but I hope it is the last time we will see this bullshit come out of the county.
We'll go to the consent agenda now. Items, let's see, 5 through 49. Supervisor Lienfeldt?
22.
Supervisor Gould?
Nothing additional, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Bishop?
Nothing this morning?
Supervisor Angus?
Nothing.
All right. Need a motion to approve items 5 through 49 minus 22.
So moved.
Second.
A motion second. Further discussion, here in that all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Supervisor Lienfeldt?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to have somebody sort of walk through what we're doing here.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. You approved the consent. It's actually through 48. 49 is a separate item.
Would you like to check my agenda again?
No.
All right. Before we start that, let me go back and make a motion to reconsider the last vote.
Second.
A motion second for discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Need a motion to approve items 5 through 48 minus 22.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. No further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 22, Supervisor Lienfeldt?
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Again, just looking for somebody to step up. This is, it's pretty irregular to me to have the mortuary service step in for medical examiner services. I'd like to have somebody talk about it.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Supervisor Lincolnfelter. It is a change from how we've provided medical examiner services in the past. There's a lot of backup that we shared with you, but we've been trying to get replacement medical examiner services for over a year now, and there's been no interest from a certified medical examiner. And so when we were trying to figure out how to do at least a short-term agreement to figure out next steps, we were approached by mortuary service providers, saying that if they could run the business side of the work and contract out to someone that's qualified to do the medical examinations, that they'd be willing to offer and take on the business side. So that is kind of, I mean, that's as simple as possible, the approach that we're taking here. So we did reach out to all mortuary service providers, and this one is who offered.
Is there any conflict between these two types of services?
We did not see that there was conflict, but we did address making sure that there was full transparency in, man, this seems really hard to talk about in a public setting, in the release after the medical exam has happened. We have requested that this provider make that information very public. They will be going through a rotation schedule. They will have on a website where bodies were released to, to make sure that it's clear that they are going through a rotational schedule. And a lot of times, it is up to the family where a body is released to, but they will be publishing that information on their website.
Great. And just a follow-up question. I know that some counties, they actually contract with other counties to provide the service. Is that something that Mojave County looked into as well?
We did, and I can let County Manager Alters speak to that. We actually did have an IGA with, I don't remember if it was Yavapai or Coconino for coverage for a little while, and we just didn't see that as a long-term option.
Speak to that a little more.
So, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Lincolnfelter, yes, we did. We've looked at the various business models in other counties. We toured both Coconino County facility and Yavapai County as well. And late in September, Dr. Mosley made it clear that he was burned out and needed a break, and the only way we could provide it was to have an IGA with Coconino County to cover for him. So we retained the inspection and the investigations by those investigators that worked for Dr. Mosley. But as far as autopsies, the agreement was predicated on Mojave County transporting and paying for the transports up to Coconino County for a limited number that did not exceed their capacity and so on. We did that for two weeks. Having those services in the county, I think you would agree, is really essential. And the fact that we could have Dr. Mosley continue to provide those services that the county attorney's office, the county sheriff's department are satisfied and pleased with, and have them done in such a way that he is not burdened, as he put it, with the business aspect of it, was an acceptable option. And I will end with, we will, now that we have a contract to provide those services because they're essential, we can proceed to work with the board on looking at the, at those services being provided in a different model in the future. And the board has approved budget in FY '22 in that direction. So I hope I've answered your question.
Yeah. I guess I'm just curious how this model came to being. Was it just because of an offer from one of the mortuary companies? Is there another county that you're aware of that provides services like this?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Lincolnfelter, I am not aware of any other county at the present time that has those services provided as a joint venture, as this is. But it's one that works. We believe it's effective. You're absolutely right. And as you heard from Tara, we were approached after three tries of going out and soliciting proposals and did not receive any. We were approached by one of the mortuaries that offered this model. We discussed it further, and we prepared a request for proposals that covered the bases, including the transparency. We met with four other funeral homes in Mojave County prior to releasing the request for proposals, and we ensured that every, to the best of my knowledge, we ensured that those funeral homes received a copy of the RFP to give them an opportunity to compete as well. We wanted to make sure this is a level playing field.
Thank you. Thank you.
Supervisor Angus?
I was just going to say a motion to approve if there's...
Oh, I have a question. Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is the rotation for the receiving of the deceased bodies written into the contract, the method thereof?
I do believe it is, yes.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gould, yes, it is.
Okay, because I've received complaints over that rotation in the past.
Supervisor Gould, I believe that the complaints on that rotation are not related to the provision of medical examiner services. I believe that that is in relation to the, oh, I can't think, the indigent decedent services. And we have specific agreements in accordance with state statute for when somebody passes away and they cannot afford funeral services. That runs through Public Fiduciary's office. And I do know that we've received complaints on that in the past, that certain mortuary services feel like they're not getting called, and that is part of that rotation process. So they're related, but not the same agreements.
Those were not the complaints that I received. The complaint that I received was when the family had no preference. We had employees that work for the medical examiner were also working for funeral homes.
Okay.
So there was the appearance of an impropriety there.
And that was one of the things we wanted to address by having it, public information of where bodies were released if the families did not have a preference.
Sure. No. Thank you.
I have some questions. This contract is basically leaving it with Mosley, who we have a letter from his doctor saying that he's no longer able to perform the duties, and we're just giving $400,000 more. This doesn't seem like a good deal to me, I guess. When we have a contract with a medical examiner, a certified medical examiner, in the contract, which has kept us going, we have, you can't just leave us high and dry. You've got to give us time, even if it's tough times, and Dr. Mosley's been really good about that. But if we have a contract with a mortuary, we have no control over that. Now, we're just hiring a mortuary, and they could have Dr. Mosley, they could have anybody doing that job. We have no control over it. I'm not complaining to you, just my opinion. Seems like for $400,000, if we're keeping Mosley, we could have just made that part of somebody's department to run that instead of giving $400,000 to a mortuary. I just don't see how it's going to work. When I first got here, we had an ophthalmologist, this is our medical examiner. We've come a long ways. And now, we're going to a mortuary, because we don't, we're not really hiring Dr. Mosley. We're hiring the mortuary. Those are my concerns.
Chairman Johnson?
Supervisor.
I believe we have the mortuary owner in the audience, if you have some questions. But there's still going to be a doctor, right? Is it, is, right? There's going to be a doctor.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, my unders...oh, go ahead, Sam.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Angus, it's been a journey since the spring, when we started to work toward renewing the contract with Dr. Mosley. We appreciate his service. The contract expired in June, June 30th. He's continued to provide month-to-month service through this month. It really came down to Dr. Mosley clearly stating in writing that he does have concerns, health-related, and he can no longer continue to provide the services under the contract, which includes the admin part, the investigation, business parts, and the medical examiner. He did say he wants to just limit his services to medical examiner. So this opportunity, again, was presented, and the proposal is built on that premise, that all business elements, administrative investigations, and all related will be provided under this contract with Dr. Mosley specifically with the credentials necessary providing the medical examiner services. If Dr. Mosley was to leave next month, this contract is binding and will require the contract holder to provide somebody with the credentials to carry on the medical examiner part of it. And we intend to, we've made it clear that we intend to enforce the terms of the contract, and I think it's clear as we award this contract to this contract holder.
What assurances do we have that are going to get another licensed medical examiner?
Chairman Johnson, supervisors, the assurance we have in this contract is the assurance that we have... is the assurance that we have in every other contract that the board awards that has, that is binding. We will enforce the terms. It's up to this, uh, 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 business who is being awarded the contract to provide those services. We understand, uh, that the medical examiner, um, professionals are, um, you know, a, a, limited commodity, uh, but, uh, this, uh, this contract is being awarded with a clear understanding that the medical examiners will, then, the medical examiner services will be provided by a professional, just like any other engineering contract, or public health contract, or any other contract that the board, the board awards.
When we advertised, um, the last time, did we put this $400,000 additional salary into the, uh, request for a medical examiner?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Board members, we did not put any cost in the proposal. We provided historical data, and, uh, the, um, entity that provided the proposal did their own, um, uh, research, came in with this proposal. We reviewed it, uh, looked at all the factors, including the prior cost, uh, and the cost of other counties, and we bring it to you believing that it's a, uh, it's a reasonable cost for the services that we're requesting.
Well, my, what I was getting at though is when we advertised to begin with, we put out a, a set, uh, price that we had. Now, we're going $400,000 more than what our last contract was. Did we, when we put out the contract or the bid, did we say the previous salary and everything else that goes with it, plus the $400,000? Or we just went with the base salary that we had, and nobody took that job? And then we came back and had an offer on this at $400,000 more?
Supervisor Johnson, in the solicitation, we don't talk at all about the price. Um, it's just a factor that was evaluated. So, if we had multiple offers, we would've evaluated and scored multiple price proposals. Um, my assumption is that they did their research, they looked at, at past records. And then one, the only thing that changed in the pricing structure on this one was that the board had directed us that all fees collected would come back to the county and be used to offset the cost of medical examiner services. That's the only thing that's changed in this. But in an RFP, we don't dictate the price. We ask the offerer to make a proposal to us and say, "In order to provide those services, this is my price." We did ask for a breakdown as part of negotiations of, of what their total costs are. I don't have it in front of me, but the evaluation committee was satisfied with that breakdown.
Not specifically theirs. What I'm saying is when we first went out and said, "Our medical examiner is leaving, we have a position open, this entails all this work, and we're willing to pay X amount of dollars." We didn't do that.
We did not do that in that one either.
And how many? We had absolutely no response?
We, we went through, I guess, sort of the, the background history. We went through, um, an RFI response, so we knew that Dr. Mosley wasn't interested in offering on a long-term agreement. As you're aware, Supervisor, um, this has always been a hard service to, um, get under contract. And so, at the time that we were trying to negotiate a short-term agreement with Dr. Mosley, we did a request for information that is really just a tool to test the market and see if there's anyone interested in offering, if they have any questions about how we scope it, or what the county's expectations are. We got no responses to that RFI. When negotiations for a short-term agreement with Dr. Mosley fell through, we immediately issued an RFP. We got no response. We even, in the 11th hour, extended the deadline, hoping that by amending and giving a couple more weeks, we might get a response. Ultimately, nobody offered on that one. And so, we were in the process of working on negotiating sort of a revised services with Dr. Mosley to take away some of the administrative stuff that he had seen as a burden and simplify the agreement just to provide the, the mandatory services. And that's when we were approached by, um, mortuary service providers that said they'd be willing to take on some of the administrative roles and contract out for the actual autopsy services. And rather than just take that offer from one person, we determined that it would be best to, um, go back out with another RFP and allowing for them to contract out for the actual, um, autopsy services, and that's how we ended up at this one. So, this is our third attempt at trying to secure services long-term.
I guess it still bothers me that, that we're losing Dr. Mosley and hiring Dr. Mosley again. That, that bothers me, and going to a private organization, especially, um, when I think it could've been done in-house. I, I worry too, in this contract, Supervisor Gould brought up a point, and I had the same complaints that the medical examiner's office, their personnel used vehicles which we purchased, although we gave them to them, it says Mojave County Coroner, whatever it says on the side, and they're going and working at some of the funeral homes, making it seems like Mojave County endorses whichever funeral home they're at. Um, are we taking steps in this contract? I've read through it, but I don't recall seeing anything about the use of vehicles or the use of Mojave County's name, you know?
So, the contract does authorize them to use the Mojave County seal. Um, assuming that the board awards this contract, we will be doing it, sort of a closeout meeting with Dr. Mosley on his contract tomorrow, and then the following day, we plan to have a kickoff meeting to negotiate the official start date and sort of transition of services from Dr. Mosley's overall medical examiner contract to the new service provider. I do know that they plan to purchase their own vehicles, um, and we can discuss with them at that time, the use of the county seal, and make sure that all of that is clear as well. But officially, they do have the permission to use the county seal, um, in providing their services.
Chairman Johnson.
Supervisor Angus.
Oh, um, go ahead.
Supervisor.
Okay, I just had a couple, um, questions for clarity. Um, is it possible that the recruitment difficulty that we've been experiencing is partially due to the fact that Mojave County has never built a, a morgue, a facility for a medical examiner to work in? Have, have you, uh, experienced any comments or any feedback?
No, I, I don't think I can speculate on that. I can say, when I worked with the county as a procurement officer, we had these same struggles as well, and as, um, probably a lot of this board is aware, we're constantly looking at what would be the benefit of potentially bringing it in-house. Um, and I, I do think this agreement, if approved, I wanna say, I think it's an initial three-year term, and the county expects that within those three years, we will have time to explore bringing it in-house. I know that we have approval right now, um, to start working on a mortuary, or not mortuary service, a, um, now I've lost it, a, a building for the medical examiner services. And I do think we recognize that that probably is part of the issue. It's just a hard service to contract for.
Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Bishop, the, the journey, the, the experience that we're having now, we learned that was experienced by our neighboring and comparable counties, both Coconino and Yavapai. They did not have those services in-house. They did them under contract. They did not have their own, uh, morgue or medical examiner facility, and ultimately went through, um, challenges and pains before Coconino went in that direction first, uh, and Yavapai modeled right after them. So, uh, you can, you can, you can speculate on the fact that because we do not have a medical examiner facility or a morgue, uh, those have factored in not getting proposals. Um, we, we are speculating, but, but we believe there's a lot of truth to that. And again, that's why we're, we proposed to the board to fund a medical examiner facility, and the board did, uh, put $2.5 million. We recognize that will not get us there, but it's, it's a good start to, to provide a future medical facility and bring it in-house, but that takes time.
Chairman Johnson.
Um, just, as far as the medical examiner's building that he's using now, I believe that's, that's leased, or at least it doesn't belong to the county. What about the equipment that's in the medical examiner's office? Does that come back to the county for this?
Certain, um, items were identified as being county property at, at contract closeout. That is part of the meeting tomorrow. We're going, going to go walk that leased facility, and one of the things we'll be working through is what is Mojave County property and needs to come back to Mojave County? What is Dr. Mosley's property? And, and we are agreeing that it is his property.
Okay, and then, uh, final question I have is if a medical examiner, um, happens to move to Mojave County and, and is available for employment, do we have a termination clause where we can get out of this agreement prior to the end of the first three years?
Without the contract in front of me, I'm, I'm assuming that this contract has our standard clause, that if funding were to go away, or it would be in the county's best interests to terminate, we would terminate and pay for services rendered up to that point. Um, I would also say if there were a qualified medical examiner that moved into the county, this arrangement would actually allow this service provider to contract with them in the same manner that they're contracting with Dr. Mosley for the, um, the autopsy services while they're still managing overall investigations and administration of the contract.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Angus.
Thank you very much. Um, just to clarify something that I don't know if I misheard Chairman Johnson, Dr. Mosley will still be the contracted ME. He just doesn't wanna do the administrative work.
Dr. Mosley will be a subcontractor to the contracted medical examiner services as the qualified individual to provide the autopsy services.
And the problem that we've had is because when we contract out, we're asking a doctor, a specialty doctor, who's usually retired or, you know, is in a different part of his life, to take on all the administrative work. And for anyone who's been out to that building out there and have a su, understands some of the intrinsic problems, excuse me, with it, this seems to be a good way to sort of normalize and, and make it so that if, we won't be put in this position. I think since I've been involved here, we've been in this position like three times where we're just sort of held, you know, so if we have the consistency of the administrative, which is what the doctors really don't wanna do, and I don't blame them frankly, they just wanna do what they're trained to do, which is to be an ME. Um, and I know that John Hassett's here, and he is the, um, applicant, and, um, can you, can I ask a few questions?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hassett, if you'd like, come up to the podium.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Supervisors.
So, when you submitted it, um, cause you, you believe that your mortuary could, um, supply the administrative, right? And so, if you just wanna kind of give us why you thought that and, and what the whole idea is, maybe if we're not missing something, maybe we're missing something of the whole thing?
Yep, absolutely.
To put the people's minds at ease.
A lot of great questions have come today, and I know that there's been some statements that have been made with regards to, you know, we're contracting to a private entity, what if something happens to Dr. Mosley? Well, the reality of it is, um, the ME's office has always been a private entity within Mojave County. It's, it's always operated that way by not having the person be a county employee. Um, there were other statements as to, "Are we going to do this in-house?" I, for one, am your biggest supporter of doing it in-house. You're just not ready for it. It was a statement that I made when I originally met with the county, that I would be more than happy to consult taking this in-house, um, with, with regards to the county taking it in-house. I do think that that is the end result of what should be planned, and I am more than happy to work with the county manager's office and, and the supervisors as well to do that. I've known Dr. Mosley and his wife for a very long time. Um, I knew them before they, when they originally did the bid, and it was something that I discussed with them, doing their transportation or logistics for them, because it was a concern that they had. Dr. Mosley is a phenomenal pathologist, um, and he does not enjoy running the business aspect of things. So, I am not a pathologist, and I, I do business, right? So, I've been under agreements with Donor Network of Arizona for the past 12 years to do their transportation and logistics for all of Mojave County. Um, I own, I own funeral homes in other counties that contract out of area, and I'll give you an example. Pima County is one that provides support services for the medical examiner's offices in both La Paz and formerly in Yuma County. There's nothing wrong with you doing that. It is, is definitely an option that the county has. However, I think that you're going to have, um, well, worse results by outsourcing to another county at this time. Um, I've done this my entire life. When I first got into this industry, I worked for Dr. Shivi doing autopsy tech, uh, when he was the ophthalmologist that you referred to, that was our medical examiner, um, as well as all the removals, transportations to the morgue off the end of Stockton Hill Road. Um, everyone keeps saying that a mortuary is going to do this. I think that the fact is that, yes, there is common ownership between our mortuary divisions, but if the mortuary is not going to be running the medical examiner's office. And I think that that's a big concern, not only from other funeral homeowners, but, um, the community in general, or, or whatever complaints that you've been hearing. So, our company owns many other entities as far as commercial real estate, med spas, so really, I, I, I wanna clarify that it is not a funeral home that is going to run this. There's a completely separate administrative team. We have, um, given promissory letters to all medical examiner staff that we will not adjust their payroll. They've all, so much, so far, 90% have committed to come on board. Dr. Mosley is not a subcontractor. He is an employee by his choice. He wants to be part of this group. Um, and, and again, I've had many conversations before I submitted to the county. It's all regarding the administrative issues. It's the two-in-the-morning phone call that Dr. Mosley has to get with regards to the vehicle being stuck on the side of the road, or something along those lines. He needs to be, and he needs to do what he's, do, does best, and that's autopsies and pathology services. So, I'm more than happy to answer any questions. I'm sure that there's some things that I forgot when sitting up there making notes, but I need you to know that it's always been a private entity that's provided these services to Mojave County. So, I'm no different than any other doctor. Dr. Mosley and, and anyone in the past could unfortunately pass away tomorrow, and we'd be right back here having the same issue. I could pass away tomorrow, we'd be having the same issue. Um, but I am a huge supporter of doing it in-house, and I just think that it's one of the challenges that we'll have to overcome in the years going forward, and I'm more than happy to help do that. I hope that answered your question, but, uh...
Yes, beautifully. Thank you.
Available if you have others.
Supervisor Lincolnfelter.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, I think Supervisor Bishop and Supervisor Angus are exactly right. I think that this issue is going to, um, continue until we fix the business side, the administrative side of this contract. It's always been an issue. There's providers out there that just wanna come in and provide the service, like you said. Uh, we've gone through a lot. Dr. Shivi, Dr. Worrell, this guy. You're gonna continue to have it, I think, until we provide a facility that they can professionally operate out of, and, you know, whether or not they become a county employee, that remains to be seen. But I think it's gonna, we have very few options. Uh, this is a little unorthodox of an approach, but I appreciate you guys stepping up, uh, until we figure it out.
Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Chairman Johnson, make a motion that we approve item 22. Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Aye. We'll take a short five-minute break.
Thank you.
Did you tend to say through 49 for the consent? Or is it just mine? Call the meeting back to order? Move to the regular agenda. Item 49, discussion, possible action, and knowledge receipt, and refer to public work for staff evaluation recommendation for future board discussion and possible action. Tertiary road maintenance petition. Have a discussion or a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Cool.
I move that we adopt item 49.
Second. Motion second. No further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Both, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 50, discussion, possible action update from the county public health director of the Board of Supervisors, COVID-19 early treatment therapies. I have one person signed up. Krista Ford.
Good morning to Mr. Chair and Supervisors. My name's Krista Ford. I live in Golden Valley. My family and I relocated here from Island County, Washington. It was the writing on the wall that the freedoms that we are endowed by our Creator were becoming smaller and smaller each day. So we rushed off to your awesome county, and we're very glad to be here. Standing at this pivotal point with you in history and will speak the truth in love for God and for humanity on behalf of my family, my children, and the world. The first truth I cling to is my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, who is the anchor for our souls, especially in this storm, who through repentance and faith gives us His peace that passes all understanding and courage to stand up against what would harm our children, our families, our friends in Mojave and Mojave County, Arizona, and beyond to the world. Dr. Carrie Madej, M-A-D-E-J, on her new website, www.carrymadej.com specializes in viewing bioorganisms under 400 to 600 magnification. She obtained, along with several others worldwide, vials of the concoction that we are being pressured, threatened, and told we must take. And inside, she found in three different vials, the Hydra Parasite, which can create an entire neural network, replicate itself. When blended in a blender, it can reassemble itself and come back together. Inside the human host, it can create this neural network, not unlike transhumanist Elon Musk's Neuralink that he has created through his dark fantasies. She also found evidence of liquid, a liquid operating system. And the Pfizer website states their vaccine, quote unquote, is an injectable operating system. I highly recommend ordering your copy of La Quinta Colonna's scientific findings report from an electron microscopy that they discovered through chain of custody verified that all three of the vaccines, quote unquote, contain 99% graphene oxide, which, as the proprietary ingredient, thus not required to be listed on the inserts. So it makes its own vast internal 5G and EMF programmable network inside the human body. Transhumanist globalists like Klaus Schwab, who's the executive chairman of the World Economic Forum, recently was arrested in Switzerland for fraud, and his other eugenics depopulationist buddies, like Bill Gates, are mercilessly trying to inject this in every single person in the world, and they are not shy about saying they want to depopulate. So they don't have a right. So, thank you for.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Palmer? Oh, Melissa? Who's addressing this from the county health department?
Chairman Johnson.
Oh, is Director Burley here? Thought she was off.
Chairman Johnson, if I may.
Sure.
I placed this on the agenda today because since the vaccines became available early in the year, we've been getting, you know, almost biweekly updates on the rollout and the administration of the vaccines. And for whatever reason, Mojave County seems to be lagging behind some of the other counties in Arizona. For whatever reason, some of the people out there, they don't want to get it. Some people just don't want to get this vaccine, or they're hesitant. And it's almost like the statistic has shown, you know, that we're lagging to shame people or to make us feel bad that we're not catching up with all the other counties. And I don't agree with that. So just the reality is if people don't want it, if our focus is truly on public health, which it is, right, then we need to really pivot, I think, and start really talking about some of these already approved early treatment methodologies or treatments that you can get, you know, from the time you get your paper that says that you're COVID positive, the first 14 days. There's Regeneron, there's the monoclonal antibody treatment, and other in-home early treatments. It is really a part of a holistic approach to battling future COVID-19 hospitalizations and deaths. So I'm really hoping that I'll be putting this item on this agenda and every other agenda until it's no longer necessary, that we educate strongly and robustly on these early treatment therapies that people can use once they get diagnosed if they don't want the shot. Because ultimately, we're trying to keep people out of the hospital, and we're trying to keep people from dying. Right?
Chairman Johnson. Supervisor Linganfelter, yes. I mean, obviously, that's our, that's our primary goal. But please keep in mind, public health is about prevention, and that is our primary focus. That is where we spend most of our time. It's not in treatment options. So while we can provide some information around treatment, we're going to be specifically referring to those that are approved by the FDA, in addition to those that are simply everyday-type steps we would ask people to take. Staying healthy, eating healthy, physical activity, staying home when you're sick, you know, the normal things that we would promote on a daily basis to help people live a healthy lifestyle and a healthy, healthy life is what public health would typically focus on. So, and as you know, prior to COVID, vaccines have always been part of our mantra and our public health messaging, whether or not it's measles, mumps, rubella, diphtheria, tetanus, you name it, those are shots and vaccines that we provide to community members at their will. Obviously, that's something that they request from us, and COVID is no different.
I'm not trying to steer this political, and I don't want to get into the reasons.
Sure.
What I'm saying is that there are treatments right now that we're not hearing as much about as we are the vaccines. There's the Regeneron, that's approved. There's the monoclonal antibody treatment, that's approved. And what I've asked in my board agenda is that you talk about the locations for those, the descriptions of those, any latest developments that you hear in the public, in the public health world on those types of things, the data that we're seeing, the number of early treated, early-treated COVID-19 patients that are taking advantage of these things at the hospitals and other things, and recovery data. For, just so people know that these things are options for them. If they don't want to have the vaccine, then they have to have options, and there are options out there. So I'm just looking for some education on these things.
Certainly. And we can certainly try to provide as much information as possible. In terms of your request here that's in the agenda, the number of early-treated COVID-19 patients, we may never have that information. That is an information that's provided to us directly. It's not provided, as I'm aware of, it's not provided to ADHS. And this is information that would be provided to the providers themselves, the medical providers would have that information, the hospitals would have that information, but they don't necessarily provide that to us.
Why are we being reported to vaccinations and not on these early treatments?
I don't have an answer for you, Supervisor Linganfelter. I just know that what we receive in terms of information is information about the number of vaccinations that people receive, and then the information that comes from hospitals, those are patient-directed. So they don't report patient information to us in that respect about who receives what treatments. We can certainly ask ADHS if they have any information that they can share with us, and we will certainly provide what we can.
Do you feel comfortable in just sort of describing what some of these approved treatments are and where they're available in Mojave County right now?
I think we can provide that, and we do have some of that information in our website already. So that information, the, the, there is one treatment missing off of that. I don't believe we have the Regeneron on there. We have remdesivir, and we have the monoclonal antibody treatments.
Great.
So we can add that, and then we can also, where we can, put their locations. We do actually, for the monoclonal antibody treatment, there is a website that people can go and put in their zip code, I believe, and then they can get that information, what the closest site is.
Great. What I'm hoping for is for subsequent board meetings, as long as we're going through this whole thing with COVID and trying to beat COVID, is that you would be able to provide some public testimonies for people that are watching, and perhaps the media that are following what you do or what we do, you know, some of the descriptions for these things, you know, for people that aren't in the medical community, they don't know really what it is, how it's being used to treat COVID.
Right.
Where it's available. I mean, we told everybody where the shots were available, every single place the shots were available, we told people. I think we should do the same with some of these early treatments. And hopefully, you know, the patients that are saying, hey, here's your paper that you're positive, that they're getting information on these early treatments at the same time. That's just my opinion.
Chairman Johnson.
Supervisor Bishop.
So these vaccines aren't 100% effective, nor are any of the other vaccines that I'm aware of. I think the decision on taking the vaccine or not is best left to a person and their healthcare providers that we've talked about many, many times in these meetings. Politics needs to stay out of the personal decisions, including medicine. So if we're going to change our reporting of COVID-19 and the facts and the, the whole outline of your report that you put out, I think it should be voted on by the board before we have one, one board member make that decision for the entire board. So that's, that's my thought on that.
Chairman Johnson, it's not my intent to change any of the reporting of the board. I believe every board member has the option to put items on the agenda, and what I've only asked for is a reoccurring item that I will place from District One, simply asking for education on these things. That's it.
Supervisor Angus.
Thank you, Supervisor Linganfelter, for bringing this forward again, and I would take it even further. It's just information, right? So I think we should have information on our website about, about the vaccine, like, for instance, children have a .025% chance of dying from COVID. That is the same as seasonal flu. The shot, on the other hand, is kind of an unknown right now. Is that true? Am I saying something true? We do not really know, because you said that you treat this as all other vaccines, but that's not really true. Because all other vaccines have been tested for years and years and years. We know what could happen down the road. We've taken all of that in, there's lots of research. This vaccine does not have those years of experience. So it is an unknown, what you're putting into your children's body. I mean, I'm not, I'm not being political, this is just a fact. So what I would like to see is more information about the numbers. So for people, we keep, we keep getting from the county, it's time to get your kid's shot, you know, shots are available, it's safe, and I would have some concern with that. But if on the website, there was another article, and that information, that .025, comes from the CDC, I'd like to have that information too, so people say, like, personally me, if I had children, I don't have young children, but if I did, I would want that information, and it seems like that's being hidden from, from everyone. It's being hidden unless you're specifically kind of looking for it. It's like, shot good, everything else bad, you know? And, and, and they're starting to make, even those numbers that are facts, they're not, you know, facts are stubborn things, right? It's a fact, but they don't want you to know that. And then question people, question like, why wouldn't they want you to know that? I would rather take the known, which is, my child would have a .025% to death, which is miniscule, than something unknown in the future. And if you're a parent and you would, that, those numbers make sense to you, then get your kid the shot. But I just don't think that we are providing the information at this point that we should, because we do know a lot more now than we did in the beginning about a lot of things. So, and this goes to the item that I put in, and it's number 54 on this agenda, you know, instead of, you know, some kind of very soft, you know, innocuous disclaimer, which really is meaningless, I'd like to put some information that is meaningful on our website. Now, how you get that? Again, maybe you should have someone of your staff who researches it and gets, you know, your trusted sources, because it's out there. You know, by trusted sources, it's not, you know, it's not political. It just is. The facts are the facts. So that's what I would like to see, is just more education, just like what Travis Linganfelter said, more information.
Chairman Johnson.
Supervisor Linganfelter.
If I may, my last, my last comment is, in my action item, not once do I use the term vaccine, not once. But you see how vaccine has hijacked this item? This item is on early treatment therapies. We don't hear about it. That's all I'm asking, is next meeting, come to the, come to the meeting and, and be prepared to provide some public information on these things that are being used by our own doctors. Maybe we need to have some doctors and nurse practitioners that are practicing in Mojave County come and testify to the board and to the citizens that are actually treating people with these things and seeing results, because we're not hearing it. And that's what's frustrating to me. Never once did I mention vaccine in this. I'm asking for early treatment education for those that are hesitant, for whatever reason. That's all I'm asking. Appreciate it.
Supervisor Cool.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Denise, several months ago, I asked that we would take a look at supplements and that we might put a list of supplements on our website. At the time, since CDC does not recommend sub, uh, supplements, no action was taken on that. Um, I personally take, um, quercetin, zinc, C, D3 and K1 and had been taking that before I got COVID. When I had COVID, I felt bad for two days. Not very bad. We, if we're going to talk about preventive, we should probably talk about preventive and having a good immune system and a good diet are probably the best thing that you can do to prevent getting the COVID and, or surviving the COVID if you do get it. So maybe we should take another look at that since time has elapsed. It was probably a year ago, I think, that we brought that item up.
Chairman Johnson.
Supervisor Bishop.
So I agree with, with a lot of what's been said here today, but if we're going to put anything in your reporting or on our website, it needs to be verifiable facts. The, the thing that I'm not comfortable with is some of the things that you read on, on social media that is not verifiable, but is being put out there as fact. So if, if we go with increasing the information we put out to the public, I'm all for that, but I want verifiable information. I don't want to be the author of a conspiracy theory that we find out later is, is, uh, is just that.
I guess the one, one thing that I would bring up would be whatever we do, we need to make sure that it's okay with the attorneys, that we're not going to get sued for saying use this or use that. I, I think we need to make sure that the county is not liable anyway for any kind of, we, we don't want to be giving our medical advice, we want to be giving somebody of authority's medical advice. Is there any other action you want to take on this item?
No, Chairman Johnson, I don't think, um, anything that we've done, either talking about education on vaccines creates any liability, nor will education on these early treatment therapies. I don't think that'll cause us any liability either. There are, the fact is that there's medical doctors and nurse practitioners who I've spoken to personally that are treating patients with some of these things. And I'm not talking about conspiracy theories. I'm talking about actual treatments by real medical doctors that are saving lives. That's what I'm, that's what I'm hoping that we would see in subsequent meetings. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item number 51, Supervisor Lingefelter.
Thank you, Chairman. District One being 65% of the land area in Mojave County, we already see a lot of these related to abatement of, of properties. Since that time, I've worked with County Manager Elters, his staff, and also I'd like to thank County Attorney Matt Smith and his staff who have all come together to work to improve the process. To start, I'd just like to have, uh, maybe David Wade from the County Attorney's Office talk about an overview of some of the things that they're doing to work with staff to improve the process and, and then maybe County Manager Elters, someone on your staff could talk about, um, some sort of a portal that the citizens could check the status. David?
Good morning, Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Lingefelter, members of the board. The Mojave County Attorney's Office has been working diligently with Development Services. We are working on the lien abatement process and, um, we are working in an effort to consolidate and, um, to integrate the processes and the forms and the documents that the various departments that use the lien abatement process uses. So we're trying to create uniformity within the departments in that aspect. We're also looking forward to making sure that all of our processes are current with legislative updates and changes. So our focus, the Mojave County Attorney's Office focus is on fairness and due process and we recognize and support the Board of Supervisors emphasis on efficiency and transparency with the lien abatement process. And we are, uh, going to continue to work diligently to accomplish our shared goals. So to that end, within the next few weeks, we intend to roll out a sort of integrated and coordinated process to make sure that all of our forms, our documents, our processes are all the same across Mojave County. So when we send out notifications and assessment notifications or, or liens and all of our, all of that to the landowners, that they're all basically the same throughout all of the departments. So with that said, um, we are looking forward to continuing to work with Development Services and we're happy to provide updates to the board upon your request when we have all of these processes integrated and we can keep you updated with, with that. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
I have a question. I mean, in all these years, we don't have our forms done?
Our forms are done. However, certain, all of our departments essentially are using different forms. Now they're, uh, our office is in charge of handling these, these cases when they are contested or when they are appealed and, um, our emphasis is to make sure that all of the processes are the same throughout. So the forms are done, they're just, they just look different and, um, we want to make sure that all of the governing or the elements in the governing statutes and ordinances are contained within every single department's form. So if we just make one form to be used by all departments, that we can make sure that our processes are the same and that everyone can get to us all of the things that this, that the, the Mojave County Attorney's Office needs to justify and to, um, to ensure that our processes are done correctly.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
Thank you, Chairman. In looking at this issue this, this year, um, with, with the number of the nuisance property issues that we've seen and just evaluating the process, what, what we saw happening was, you know, it's, it's very time consuming, the neighboring properties, they obviously want something to be done yesterday to, to, to fix, to clean up the property, but, um, you know, there is due process, there are timeframes, they have letters, and then it would get to a point, some of these would get to a point where it would go to the County Attorney's Office and they would, they were being dismissed. And so I'd asked, why are they being dismissed? And the reason is they didn't feel like they had enough information to fully and successfully process these things. So if you see a months-long process and then it gets to the County Attorney's Office and it gets dismissed, that's obviously very frustrating for the, the neighboring property. So I thought, what can we done, what can we do to, um, make this process better? And again, I thank County Attorney Matt Smith and you, David, for stepping up and also our, our staff. Tim, could you come up and just talk a little bit about what we can do to keep people informed online? Because right now, the district office, my district office is getting a lot of, a lot of calls on me is that people want to know and stay informed on, on different cases.
Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Lingefelter, thank you. As Attorney Wade mentioned, uh, we've been working with, we've been, excuse me, we've been working with the, the Attorney's Office to get some of our, our forms, uniforms, forms uniform across the board. But we've been, we've been working with them for, for some time and, and working through these items. One thing that we've been working on with IT is going through our Acela program and getting our records formatted so that the public has better access to them. Currently, we're, we're working with a, an outside consultant to basically go through and, and I'm going to mess up the, the technical language, but basically format the files in there so that they're, uh, more easily searchable. We're, we're currently in that process and that will benefit us not only on the abatement, on the, the trash cases, the dangerous building cases, uh, the many cases that we receive complaints on, but it'll, it'll help us across the board with our building files, our zoning files. Ultimately, once we're done, um, it will enable us to open up what's called Acela, Citizens Access, and that will allow our citizens to be able to go online, check the status of their permit at any time, check the status of a complaint that they've made regarding a dangerous building, regarding a trash violation, the zoning violation, those types of things. So, um, we are in process. At this time, um, it, it's really just a matter of reconfiguring those files so that they're, they're more easily searchable.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you.
I have a question, Tim. Don't you guys have a meeting like a, to get all your people together on these properties? Is it, it's like 15 people show up from all the departments and everywhere in the world?
So, Chairman Johnson, that's a great question. We actually, um, we, we've had a couple of different, uh, committees that we've, we've utilized in the past. In, in the past, we utilized a dangerous building abatement program, uh, abatement committee. And what we did was we, we would bring the properties to this committee. It, it consisted of a number of fire, um, fire district, uh, people. It consisted of a number of internal employees as well. And, um, ultimately, what we found with that specific committee, and it was a, an internal committee that we had formed, what we had found was, um, by the time we got the properties to the committee, they were able to review these properties and, and rank them and then get back to it. It, it really had slowed down the process. When COVID came about, we were, we were unable to have those meetings anymore and we began ranking them internally and, and we were able to speed up the process. And, and over the past year, we've been able to do quite a few more, uh, abatements without that specific committee. Also, we had another committee that we would work with and, and we do still, uh, work with the Health Department, but we had a committee, um, just internal employees that we would work with the Health Department on trash abatement cases and zoning abatement cases. And, um, the board, I believe it was last budget, um, approved combined, or basically reallocating or, or reassigning trash cases from Health Department over to Planning and Zoning. So we were able to consolidate that and, and basically make that a little bit more efficient, having both the zoning and the trash cases under the same roof.
This just sounds like government screwed something up again. We're taking forever to get this done without, what do you want? Supervisor Lingefelter, any action?
Thank you, Chairman. No action at this point. I think they're already taking some actions that hopefully they'll bring, uh, after it's all implemented, you guys can come back and sort of walk everybody through it.
Absolutely. And if I may, just to, to kind of give the board an update as, as far as where we are with our, our trash cases and dangerous buildings for the year, just in FY '22, excuse me, um, we had, let's see, we had 43 cases that, that, for dangerous buildings, we had 43 cases come in. Upon inspection, 12 of those were unfounded. Uh, 15, we were able to get the owner to comply, so they, they addressed the dangerous building themselves. Uh, we've abated 15 properties ourselves. So we, we've, we've got 15 that we've, we've been able to clean up those properties on a dangerous building. As far as with trash cases, um, we've gone out and, and had 76 cases, um, that we've investigated. We've found that 60 of those were founded. Um, of that 60, we got 49 of the owners to, to clean up that trash themselves. Um, we've had six that the county abated and then we've also had six that are currently in process. So, um, the program is up and running. We are, uh, making a dent out there. Unfortunately, it doesn't always go as quickly as the, the neighbors would like, but, um, that, that goes back to the, the due process and being able to give them every opportunity to clean it up themselves first.
Are you talking about, uh, some of the trash dumping, you're getting the owners that to clean it up themselves?
So just, Chairman Johnson, just to be clear, uh, this is for onsite trash, the owner is, is dumping on their own property. The offsite trash would, would be through Erase and, and, you know, they address that themselves. But yes, for the onsite trash where, where they have an accumulation of garbage on their property, we've been able to get a, a number of them to self-abate.
How many repeat offenders are you getting?
Unfortunately, uh, we, we, I don't have the exact number, but yes, that, that is something that we face quite frequently is, is we have those repeat offenders that, um, one in particular I can think of, we, we just spent a, a good deal of money with a couple of 40-yard, uh, trash enclosures that we've, we've filled and, and hauled off and, and we're still dealing with them. But, um, that's one that, we're actually working with the County Attorney's Office and, and is in the courts right now. So we're, we're hopefully to, hopefully be able to get some sort of resolution with that one.
Are we getting any help from the courts? Obviously, they're fair-minded people, but I don't know in the past where somebody would have a large collection of trash and show up in court and say, here's a, here's a receipt, I went to the dump and the judge would dismiss the case and the guy would, hadn't really dumped anything.
And Chairman Johnson, you, you bring up a good point. Unfortunately, when we, um, for a lot of our, our cases that actually make it to court, they are serious cases and unfortunately, those defendants are, have a number of other issues with the courts. And unfortunately, a, a trash violation doesn't always rank as highly as, as some of the other offenses that they've, that they've, uh, that they've incurred. And many times what we'll see is, is during those plea agreements, some of the, the trash violations or zoning violations do get pled away.
I guess the board could always ask for a report on those and we could make public which, which judge is letting people go. I have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here now, 52. Supervisor Lingefelter.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. If I get Mr. Latowski, Director Latowski to come up. Steve, really the only reason that District One put this on is we've been getting a lot of, uh, calls, um, just citizens in general, they're wanting to know, you know, when in the year that their road might be receiving some sort of a maintenance treatment. And I thought maybe that would be an opportunity for you to talk about where on the county's website they might go to, to find out where their road might, might be receiving some sort of a treatment.
Thank you Supervisor Lingefelter, Chairman Johnson, members of the board. Uh, for several years, Public Works has published a one-pager Road Maintenance Newsletter. We do it weekly and we release it to the media as well as numerous community groups across the county. We posted on our, on our Public Works website, but we've been very much remiss and it stops with me at really prominently advertising it on our website. So I did bring up a, a series of slides and do apologize for the, uh, resolution, but you'll see, uh, this is a snapshot of our Public Works homepage. And on the left-hand column, uh, it's in the grayish area, there'll be a link to what's called Road Maintenance Newsletter. And that will provide in chronological order, the most recent published Road Maintenance Newsletter issued weekly, as well as access to previous newsletters. We also take advantage of this newsletter to, uh, make residents aware of chip seal activity during our spring road mode, uh, heavy maintenance road program. So oftentimes, we'll actually attach a second page that to make residents aware, uh, where the road division will be chip sealing roads. The slide actually skipped forward, but I think we're good here. Um, actually, I just wanted to say, um, on the homepage, uh, I moved it front and center to a link, uh, that residents can click on for a GIS map of our next week's road maintenance activity. So moving to the next slide, uh, you'll see this, uh, information come up. By and large, uh, there is a legend that indicates the roads that are subject to, uh, either grading work, uh, these are, are on surface roads, uh, or under some other normal maintenance such as pahill repairs, planned crack sealing activities. That's quite prominent right now. You'll see crews working, uh, in crack sealing roads that, uh, either are in need due to their distresses or possibly being prepped already for our next season's, uh, chip seal season. But when any resident were to click on one of the blue links or, or somewhere where it indicates that there is, uh, planned road maintenance, they'll get some more information on the limits of that particular planned road maintenance activity. Uh, so moving ahead, I think we have wondered that, I believe that is the conclusion of the slide. So the story is, we had this information available. We wanted to harness the powers of our county GIS by including a layer that's dedicated for Public Works to update on our road maintenance activities, but also our hallmark Road Maintenance Newsletter, making it more accessible and advertised, if you will, through our Public Works website. So everyone will have a easy one-click access to it.
Great, thank you.
All right. Need any action?
No action, just update.
Item 53, Supervisor Angus.
Mr. Chairman, before we get into that, I'd like to read a prepared statement.
Sure.
Thank you. I've been libeled and slandered on this. Thank you. I've been libeled and slandered on this issue. My wife has been libeled. I'm a politician, so the threshold for libel and slander is high. My wife is a private citizen. My wife may take action. But let me go ahead and read this. I own two properties in the development governed by the Property Owners Association Stagecoach Trails at Santa Fe Ranch. I have never been a board member of the POA. I have never served on any committee of the POA. I have never had any business relationship with the POA or the management company. I served on the county required Dutch Flat Plan Committee. I vote in POA elections of the governing board members as do many of the other property owners. I attend the annual property owners' meeting and have spoken there as an owner and an elected official. My wife Janice Gould co-owns our two properties in the Property Owners Association. She's a licensed real estate agent with Havasu Realty. We do not own Havasu Realty. She has never been a member of the governing board or of any committee of the Property Owners Association. She has no business relationship with the Property Owners Association or the management company other than to request the new owner's packet from them as all Realtors do. She attends the annual Property Owners Association meeting and speaks as an owner or a Realtor. My son Ron Gould Jr. co-owns one of our properties at Santa Fe Ranch. He has never been a board member of the Property Owners Association, nor has he served on any committee of the Property Owners Association. He's never had a business relationship with the Property Owners Association or the management company. He has never attended a meeting of the POA. No members of my family to the third degree of consanguinity own property or have any business relationship with the Property Owners Association or the management company. By my hand, Ron Gould. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Angus, I have people signed up. Do you want to hear them first?
Can I just say why I put it on the agenda? I put this on the agenda because there were accusations made and I just think it's always best to talk about things. And I personally want to know some of the background on this. And thank you Supervisor Gould for that. I'm glad you got an opportunity to say all that. And yeah, so with that, from the county, I'd like to hear, oh, no, people signed up?
Yes.
After the county talks.
You want the county first?
I think it's better to go county first.
Too much stuff. Chairman Johnson, members of the board. Just to provide a brief history on this item, the accusation's been made. We'll just go back. On September 20th, we received a complaint that the Property Owners Association in Santa Fe Ranch was grading illegally and illegally within the flood plains. So September 29th, Flood Control met onsite with Mr. Ware and investigated, inspected the sites that he had concerns about. Following that investigation, that inspection, we notified the Property Owners Association via certified mail as well as by phone that there were concerns regarding the grading in the area. The Property Owners Association came in, they met with us regarding the grading, and they felt at the time that it would be in their best interest to apply for a floodplain use permit. We received a floodplain use permit application from the POA on October 20th. After reviewing it, we met with the Property Owners Association October 21st and issued the floodplain use permit. Then following, ADWR contacted us about a complaint that they had received about grading in the flood plains. We met with the representative of ADWR, ADWR is the liaison for FEMA in Arizona, and explained the complaint that we had received, our inspection, and how we were addressing the issue. And they concurred with our approach to the, to the item. A little background, the property, the ranch with Santa Fe, or Santa Fe Ranch subdivision began in the late 90s, 98, 99. It was platted at that time. At that time, there were no recorded flood plains in that area. Then about in 2008, FEMA came through and mapped the flood plains in the area. So the roads were created back in 98, 99. They'd been grading them, maintaining them for that time. The Property Owners Association was created in 99 as well and had been maintaining those roads. Typically, when a property gets mapped into a floodplain, we will contact that property owner. However, in this situation, the roads are not owned by the, any property owner. They're on, they're public roadways, owned by the county. Therefore, no contact was made. Once we, we were notified of this, we, we notified the POA. They came in, applied for the permit and received it. Typically, just a, a little additional information, typically roadways, bridges, culverts are exempt from floodplain use permits. However, in this situation, we, we felt that because it was being maintained by a private organization outside of the county, it would be in their best interest and they concurred to, to get the floodplain use permit. So they applied and we issued that permit. That's my story.
So all of this was done somewhat recently?
Yes.
And so, but is there any, so everything that came before was just sort of grandfathered in?
So, make sure I'm understanding the, the question. Any of the road work or whatever was, that's done before?
Right, well, as far as I understand, the accusation was that this has been going on for many, many years without these permits. So does this new permit make all of that okay?
Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Angus. Angus, that's correct. Basically, what our, what the floodplain, or what the Flood Control District and really Development Services in general, what we seek to do is, is obtain compliance. If somebody's out of compliance, our, our thing is, hey, let's bring them back into compliance. Not necessarily a punitive, oh, let's, let's throw the book at them. It's what can we do to bring you into compliance? So ultimately, obtaining that floodplain use permit brings them into compliance. So any work that they're doing in, in those flood plains is now permitted.
When was the first time you got a complaint about, it wasn't just in September? You've gotten, in the past, there've been complaints, haven't there?
On this specific, with regards to grading without a permit in a floodplain, this was the first one that we had received on this.
Were there other ones though for this area before? You know, you know what I'm getting at. Was, you know, did we just wait until everything became big or did we just kind of let it go? Did it fall through the cracks?
So to, to be honest, generally, when we have flooding complaints or, or you know, grading issues, somebody's rerouted a wash, we will go out and, and work with the, the person that's made the complaint as well as the property owner and explain some of the issues that they're having. But ultimately, outside of a floodplain, the county does not insert itself into those issues. It's, it's basically a civil matter at that point. If, if somebody feels that they've been harmed, they have the ability to go after the, the person that they claim harmed them civilly.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Karol. Jerry Farson?
I just, I am so upset at the water that is coming in on my property. In December of 2019, we went to a meeting, the Santa Fe Homeowners Association, but we're not part of that. But we were told that we could come to the meeting. And I've lost multiple pigs, piglets from drowning. Our birthing pens were built before all this started happening. And we had to go under, we have concrete under. So it's, it, it's hard to, you know, to make more because of all the money that we've spent on, on providing the birthing pens for my sows. And then when my, when my piglets are, sorry. When my piglets drown, my sows, they are very aggressive. You know, I, I would be too. I am actually. But that, my complaint is, all the water coming in our property that never did. And then they, I, I don't know why, but from Juniper, they, it's like they took dirt and just pushed it out on our property in three or four different places. And I've called the Homeowners Association to tell them about it, you know, because I don't know really who did it. It, it just, everything's changed. And I never got any calls back. And I haven't, I haven't called in the last couple of years because we went to that one meeting and nothing was, we were nobodies. But that, that's my thing.
Have you contacted the county on this before or not?
I've called them. And this was, this was when it first started. And I don't even, I don't, I, I had books, a book of all of my livestock. I have, you know, how many pigs this sow had on this date, this time, the weather was this. Our house burnt down in July, July 24th. And that book was in there. And we've lost so far 31 piglets due to all this rain, all this water coming in. It comes right down our driveway and, and just right on down.
All right, we'll have, we'll make sure that Mr. Walsh gets ahold of you after the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mike Servillo?
My name's Mike Servillo. I'm the Board Chairman for Santa Fe Ranch. I'm at PO Box 182 Yucca. We were under the impression that we were coming to this meeting to be able to go over our grading procedures and how we do things. That's changed a bit, Mr. Chairman. I understand that there are people here that have complaints. We would really like to see them go first so we can address, so we know what we're addressing. We did know what we were addressing when we, when, when this was first called, which was to come down and explain our grading procedures to you. But this has changed and we'd like to go last.
Supervisor Angus? Okay.
Are we okay?
We're just going to be talking about sort of the agenda item and, and you know, I don't know if it's really that big of a, you know, of an overview of all your procedures, but.
We'd, we'd like to go last. I think it would be, it's fair for us to do that.
It's up to the chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we'll allow it. Melissa Layton?
She's our property manager and also we'd like, we'd like to, all the people that would like to present evidence to go, go ahead and go first.
Robert Songer?
My name is Robert Songer. I bought my property back in June of 1999. It's on the lot number 2132. And it's on the southeast corner of Mesquite and Wyatt Earp. I spent, I wasn't retired then, but I spent most of my weekends out there camping out. And the roads were perfect. I mean, I, of course, they had a few washes and stuff, but Mesquite was never washed out or anything. And I think J and K was grading them at the time. And then come along TLC got the grading contract and they started putting those swales in, which diverted a lot of water onto people's property. I think Mike, at one of the board meetings, made a motion that we should notify the landowners that were getting the water on their property. But it got turned down three to two, so they never notified anybody, which I didn't think was very good. When they put those big swales in, they put one over on a mile north of us on Juniper Drive. It shunted a lot of water over on Mesquite, washed the whole road out for about a third of a mile. I couldn't drive on it. I had to go around the back way, which is a couple of miles longer, get back onto Mesquite where it wasn't washed out. And it was like that for about two and a half to three years. And I'd go to the board meetings and complain about it and they said, oh, it's a special project. We'll have to haul in dirt and stuff. And they never did, but finally they graded the road and it was okay the way it was. I don't know where they got the special project thing going, but it was. But those swales, when I bought my property, they gave me a map of the swales. I had three little swales on the north side of my property on, right off of Mesquite. They weren't big. They just run on top of the land. Today, I go out my back door and I can walk to Mesquite and I count 17 washes that have been on my property. I think it's devalued my property quite a lot. I don't know, maybe I should have it assessed again, but that's neither here nor there. But other than that, I don't know. They removed all, most of all the swales, but it didn't really create the, do anything to the problem because those swales had cut washes into people's property. And when it rains today, it still washes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Brian Ware?
My name is Brian Ware. I own property 12303070 in the Yucca area. Chairman, Supervisors, County Manager, and Department Staff and all citizens of Mojave County. Let's go back almost 25 years, 100,000 acres and 500 miles of roads. In 1997, Santa Fe Ranch POA decided to develop in Mojave County with pages of promises primarily with regards to the roads. In 1999, the Dutch Flat Plan is developed to add to the Mojave County General Plan and the Yucca Plan. Together, both documents made many promises. Today, it's nothing but promises broken. In 2007, Ray Powell is required to install a half a million dollars in asphalt project on Butch Cassidy Road, per the county. And every storm since then, every piece has been damaged by the grading and water diversions made by this POA. The benefit to the POA is the taxpayers get to foot the bill to repair that asphalt each time the asphalt gets blown out, not the POA. By November 18 of 2009, Santa Fe Ranch POA has been grading and diverting for 12-plus years at this point. They have also built this point, by this point, have been required to comply with federal, state, and county adopted FEMA floodplain and grading ordinances known as Title 45. 2014-001 Statutory Number 7 somehow gives them an exemption, which the county has applied to this POA. However, the exemption specifically states it's for doing improvements, not moving dirt and not just moving surface water. They start, in 2018, they start building bigger swales to divert water and subsequently damage my property and my ingress and egress to my property. I start to send letter after letter notifying them and the county of this issue and both feel it's not their problem. 10 years has now passed. Several county representatives have been at road meetings with the POA to discuss issues and concerns. have been at road meetings with the POA to discuss issues and concerns, all aware of this disaster in the making. I sent more letters to the county POA and to the county and the POA with no response or a simple response of it's not our problem. September 26th of 2021, we are notified that if we have an event planned without a permit, we need to, we'd be in violation. So by October 3rd, Mesquite Ranch plans a private gathering and needs and files for that special event permit. By October 18th, Mesquite Ranch has denied that special event permit and this took less than days to enforce. Same day, the POA is found in violation and notified following the Board of Supervisors meeting in private. No big red tags posted to notify the community. October 20th of 2021, POA files for a road maintenance permit with limited details and limited scope of work with no regard to remediation of damages caused to right of ways or private property. Sometime around this time, the private property side-by-side track is red-tagged, no less than seven red tags posted across the property. This took days to stop and enforce. No red tags for the POA, no penalties for the POA, no remediation for the POA. Meanwhile, that POA is still in violation of Title 45 and 48. On November 10th of 2021, sundown motoplex is denied. Questionable is the quick vote by no by LaWanna Gillette, who's ironically is district supervised planning and zoning board member. Biased, maybe, or just manipulated by her district supervisor.
Can I go a little farther?
Mr. Chair, I see the time is up, but really we need to stick to the agenda item and, and other things that the planning and zoning may have voted on or Mesquite Ranch are not part of this agenda item.
I'll be moving past it right now.
Thank you for your, thank you for your time, Mr. Ware.
Can I continue or no?
No, sir.
No? Okay.
I'd give everybody more, more time if I had, did you?
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You can submit any paperwork you might have if you, if you want.
Oh, I'll submit my public records because, thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Mike Servillo? Supervisor Angus wants to determine agenda item.
I would like to bring to the podium with me Melissa Layton, our property manager. Thank you. Uh, she has a written statement. If we could have a few minutes to go over that statement since we're under the light here.
Got three minutes.
Yes, sir.
In that case, I'll let, and if you need, open it for questions.
Well, I don't know that I can get through it in three minutes, but I'll do my best. Stagecoach Trails at Santa Fe Ranch POA was developed in 1997 by Legends Land LLC after gaining approval from Mojave County. Developer approached the county to gain approval for his project with the intention that the county would take over maintenance of 456 miles of dirt roads. Instead, the county approved the project as long as the developer would put in his CCNRs that the POA had the responsibility to maintain those dirt roads at least one time annually. Um, since the time of inception, Santa Fe Ranch POA, through its board of directors, property managers, and with a contract, commercially licensed road grader have worked closely with the county to fulfill road grading requirements. There have been numerous meetings by and between county and the association over the years. And anytime the county has made a requirement of the association, it's been fulfilled to our knowledge at county standards and have been completed. Recently, we were advised of a floodplain permit that was required and had been required since some changes were made to the flood map on or around 2009. As required in the permit, the grading practices, which are mandated by the county practices on Alamo and Butch County, or Butch Cassidy, are conducted in a way to not alter natural flow of the floodplain. As on Alamo Road and Butch Cassidy, ditches are placed to protect the roads from drainage during rains, but the natural wash characteristics are still intact. Since completing the permit, we have once again spoken with county officials and have been advised that there's no further permitting required for the road maintenance we're required to perform. Secondly, we discussed with the POA practices of road maintenance following DOT and Army-approved dirt road maintenance guidelines. We were also advised that county staff has, um, visited the ranch and that our practices met all county requirements. We are required to maintain all dirt roads in Santa Fe Ranch annually per agreement made between original developer in Mojave County, and that's what we do. We've always used a commercially licensed road grading contractor who's properly insured. Contractor performs maintenance on two roads that are required to be maintained by the county, but in order to subsidize that maintenance, the association pays to have the work done alternately. The road grader has a permit on file with the county to perform that work as well. In order to monitor road conditions and accomplish the grading on the development road system annually.
Thank you, ma'am.
May I ask a question, Chairman Johnson?
Sure.
So, um, thank you. Were you aware of these complaints, the lady in the back who got up to speak and, and Mr. Ware? Were you, they say they've been sending letters that go unanswered. What is the, what is your policy and procedures on that?
I'm not aware of the lady that spoke with the pig farm, although I do understand she may have been present at a meeting. I don't recall that. I don't have any letters from her, nor do I have any letters from Mr. Ware. Uh, he did, Mr. Ware did approach me several years ago and I invited him to attend a board meeting with, with Santa Fe Ranch, which he did. And the board did hear his concerns and took it under advisement. And I did have a follow-up conversation with Mr. Ware to know, let him know what, what their outcome was.
Right. So as far as remediation, if a property has been hurt because of some stuff that the POA has done, what is their recourse?
Well, I, I assume if the association were in agreement that they had actually caused the problem, there may be something that would be...
Who makes that decision?
The board.
The board?
The board. And if they're not in agreement, then ultimately it would become a civil matter between the association and a, and a private party.
Okay. So they, they have recourse civilly, in a civil lawsuit?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Walsh, can you come up again? I'm just looking for answers on county responsibility on the roads we do. And maybe, I'm guessing you could answer this, if not, Mr. Lotosky probably could. When we build a road, we have to take care of flooding issues and make sure those issues that we don't do damage to somebody else's. Does that fall onto the same thing we're talking about here?
Chairman Johnson, that's correct. If, if the, if the POA graded the road that changed the, the direction of flow and adversely impacted a property, they could be liable for basically a civil matter. Basically, they could be sued by that property owner for damages.
Has the Corps of Engineers been involved in this?
Not that, we, we haven't worked with the Army Corps of Engineers on this at all, no.
Wouldn't the Corps of Engineers be the ones that come in with the heavy hammer and say who's right and who's wrong?
My understanding is typically the, the Army Corps of Engineers would, would, would be involved if it, um, if it involved waters of the US, navigable waters of the US. Um, of course, that's a, a definition that's up for debate right now, depending on, on which, which administration's in office. But typically, this would be more of a, a local matter. And when, when we worked with ADWR on the issue, they, they received a complaint and, and we worked with them on, on our response to that complaint. They were happy with our response and they, they concurred with, with what we were doing. They also basically identified it as a, as a local issue. So, um, at least in ADWR and, and by, by extension, FEMA's eyes, this would be a local issue that would be addressed locally. The county's stance generally in flooding issues is outside of floodplain, you know, mapped floodplanes. Basically, we, we don't interject ourselves. It's basically a matter between the two parties, the one that's harmed and the one that caused the harm. We, we don't typically interject ourselves except for in cases where it, it damages county property.
You're saying this is or isn't mapped?
It, it is now. Initially, when the subdivision was platted, it was not mapped. Um, since then FEMA has come back in and mapped it and, and located those, those floodplanes in certain areas.
Is that something that you feel we're going to have to do? Because we all know how it happens out there in the Wild West. One guy comes in and changes the wash, so it goes off his property. The next guy moves it. Pretty soon a wash that was supposed to be running one way isn't even close to it.
Generally, generally, our, our practice has been to go out, look at the, investigate it. We'll, we'll send our, our field techs out. They'll look at the property, um, look at where the water's historically gone, see if it has been rerouted. If it's been rerouted, we'll notify both the, the person that complained. It's saying that, hey, it used to go here. It's been rerouted here. We'll also notify, um, the, the person that, that may have done the work and said, and let them know, you've rerouted this, you're causing damage, you need to repair these issues. But that's typically as far as the county gets involved. At that point, we, we back up and, and let them handle it between themselves.
Do we, are we doing any wash projects out in that area?
We don't currently have any, any flood control projects in that area, no.
Have we done any in the past?
Not that I'm aware of. I, I take it back. We are, we're not doing any construction projects right now. Currently, we are looking at re, basically taking a closer look at the area, at the Yucca area. Um, we've actually had additional topography done and we are looking to better address those, the FEMA maps to get them more, uh, more in line with, with actual floodplanes and that. So we are working on a remapping project for the area. However, it's, it's still early on. It's one of our FEMA continuing, or cooperating technical partnership grants that we've...
It seems like when they put the road in out there, the, well, the original roads we were building, we put in some high-dollar structures for flood control to go underneath the road, didn't we? Is it on?
I don't...
Have no flood, no?
The, once upon a time, the Butch Cassidy Road was, uh, was not a county road. There's a developer about 15 miles down that wanted to subdivide his parcels down to five-acre parcels. So the county made him improve the intersections. Um, they were done to county standards and I believe county standards are too low and that ended up falling apart.
Ah.
So that's probably what you're thinking. And that was every low-water crossing on Butch Cassidy Road. Thank you.
All right. And I think the other thing, you probably don't recall, but the county forgave all the back taxes out there too before that thing got developed. You have any other questions? Do you have any action on this?
Chairman, did I have my three minutes?
Sure.
Again, my name's Mike Servillo. I'm the board president for Santa Fe Ranch and I, my address is PO Box 182 Yucca. Uh, I'd just like to give some updates about what we're really doing and what we're trying to do. Uh, we have been working with county floodplain. Uh, we have the first half of a FEMA study happening that, that, that will deal with half the ranch to update the FEMA plans. After that is completed, the second one is in line to ask FEMA for, for those. What happens for us when those two plans get done, especially the first one, is that we're able to go out and ask for FEMA money for grants and low-interest loans to start putting in flood control, so the county doesn't have to do it. We, we understand we're on our own out there, but we can get these low-interest grants and these, or low-interest loans and grants from FEMA. We can start putting in water retention ponds, which we've talked to a lot of our owners about that are willing to give up an acre or two to put these water retention ponds in that will slow this water down, that will also recharge our aquifer. Uh, so we're really, like I said in front of this board last time, we're proactive. We know that we can't call on the county for every little thing. So we're taking it upon ourselves to put those mechanisms in place. So when they're there, we can get those grants. And this year, we're blessed with somebody who came out of Nevada who writes those kind of grants, who knows where that money is. Right now, if we had a piece of property to put a fire department on, we could actually go get a $40,000 grant for all the engineering for a community well. We just need that property, which is something we're going to be talking to the board about here in the future. But I believe you have a proactive community here. We have over 500 miles of road that we maintain that was, that it's what the developer and the county gave us to begin with. And, uh, you know, we, we charge $145 a year. That's our dues. We have just under a half a million dollar a year budget. We actually, Melissa talked about the one-time grading. We actually do full, two full-time grades a year, more than we're responsible for. And in reality, we have a grader out there five days a week, 365 days a year, or 52 weeks a year, thank you. So I think that we're doing everything we can, uh, based on people putting in driveways without their permits and pushing water into our road and cutting ditches around their 36-acre properties and pushing all that water out in the road directly at the pig ranch. Thank you.
Um, excuse me, sir. So were you aware of these complaints that came? You're the president of the POA. I was the president of HOA, so I, I know what, how that all goes. You, you were aware of some of these complaints?
We had a meeting with, with the people who own the pig ranch and we took out three swales that were there. This board, our board, is not a real swale fan. We had a board that was. Their, their, their fix, everything was a swale and they didn't care where they ran the water. We took those swales out and ran that water back down the road, which is the way the developer and the county gave us the road.
Okay. So when you were moving all the, the earth, moving the dirt, at no, it wasn't required to get any kind of permits? I mean, I...
We were taking, we were taking the roads back to their original design. We were taking the road back to, back to the place where we got the road.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Please.
Thank you.
State your name and address, please, sir.
Hi, my name is Gary Forrest. And they said that they're putting, they took the swales out and they're putting the roads back the way they were. I had a meeting with them at the edge of my driveway, December 10th of 2019. Nothing has yet been done right at the edge of my driveway. They've taken out, their road graders have taken out a cattle guard, BLM fence, and it's all opened up and all that water runs right down my driveway, right into my stalls. And that's when I have, you know, pigs floating, stuff like that. You know, 31 pigs, that, you know, may not seem like a lot of money, but to me it is. You know, this is my livelihood. This is what I do. And...
Can I ask you why you didn't...
They haven't had any, any, anything from us at all. We've been to their meetings. They've been to my property. Um, we've tried to call many, many, many times. You get an answering machine, it's their POA, and nobody ever calls back.
Sir, is there a reason, since it is affecting you so gravely, that you haven't taken any legal action?
We tried to talk to them, tried to do it. We're inside Santa Fe Ranch, Stagecoach Trails, whatever you'd like to call it. But when we bought our property in 2002, we were assured we weren't in a flood, floodplain. We've got, we had our paperwork. As my wife had told you, our house burned down. You know, we don't have any, anything anymore, except for, you know, our animals. My wife's living at a church in Yucca with our grandchildren because we have four custody of four of our grandkids. I live in a barn with, you know, because I have to stay out there with my animals. But, you know, that's, you know, we're hillbillies. We, you know, we, we don't know anything about that. You know, we're, we tried to work with them and trying to work with them. You know, Mike came out to my property, said, you know, give us a little bit of time. Two years? Come on. A little bit of time is a little bit of time. Two years is two years.
Thank you. I hope by presenting this publicly, the POA will approach you and help you, um, rectify this situation.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Chairman Johnson, may I allow Mr. Ware to come up just for a few more minutes?
A couple of things. Your wife's on the Santa Fe Ranch POA handout as the expert Realtor.
Supervisor Gould.
If I could finish where I was.
One second, sir.
What document is this, sir? I'm sorry, I apologize. That's the Santa Fe Ranch handout that they-
No, it is not, sir. You are incorrect once again.
Give these to their people who buy property, because I got that from them. Thank you. That's who it came from, the Realtor.
Those are my wives that my wife made up.
She's handing them out through the POA, sir. She's using the POA to conduct business.
You're not a member of the POA, why would you have ever had one?
So anyways, what I wanted to go on with is-
You continue to lie.
11-18-2021, here we are, almost 12 years later, the date of the anniversary, if you will, of the adoption of the FEMA-
Be fast enough, I don't know what you're saying. Why don't you slow down?
Because you like to interrupt, sir.
This is the first time I've ever interrupted you.
You like to be condescending, you like to be arrogant, and I'm not going to sit here and put up with you.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just cut in, the speakers do need to speak through the chair with permission of the chair, and right now, we just have a lot of back and forth, and it's certainly hard for everyone to hear and understand.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, sir. 11-18-2021, here we are, almost 12 years to the date of the anniversary, if you will, of the adoption of the FEMA floodplain in grading ordinance. We still have no real answers. The POA is still in violation of Title 45 and 48. Maybe it's time for an environmental impact study, considering the damage may have reached both the Bill Williams National Wildlife Refuge and the Lake Havasu National Wildlife Refuge, ultimately reaching the Colorado River and possibly impacting endangered suckerfish, vital plant life, and wildlife, and depositing millions of cubic yards of sand, silt, and sediment. Ask yourself, what other developer or POA has gone 12 years with no permits while moving millions of cubic tons of dirt and diverting millions of gallons of surface water, water causing an untold amount of damage? The biggest concern going forward with the roads is that this POA and district supervisor and member of this POA not allowed, not be allowed to create a road district, thus revealing, relieving the POA of its accountability with penalties and remediation, and instead would put it on the backs of the taxpayers in the district. They claim stewards of the desert, it appears they are the destroyers of everything in their path in the desert. What are the folks that bought land 20 years ago and now are ready to retire on that POA land, going to say when they find out it has a new water course going across it that didn't exist the day they bought the property and started building on their dreams, but now those dreams may be shattered? These are not the stewards, as they claim, to you, but really, they need to be held accountable for the 12 years of violation, with some extensive penalties, serious plant and engineered remediation, and an environmental impact study from the Huallapai Mountains west to the Colorado River to prove the damage they have caused locally has not reached the Colorado River, destroying the sensitive ecohabitats that are protected in the area. Thank you.
Supervisor Gould.
Mr. Ware, back up to the part where you defamed me, please.
What do you want to talk about, sir?
I thought I heard you defame me, and you speak so fast that I was not clear. Can you back up to that portion?
Yeah, what would you like to know? That I think you're an egotistical jerk? Is that what you'd like to know?
You don't even know me, buddy.
I know who you are. I voted for you, sir. I know more about you than you think.
You don't even know me.
That's the biggest mistake I've made in this county, was voting for you.
I thought we weren't interrupting.
You asked me, I answered. Let me finish.
How many times have I talked to you?
A few, sir.
No.
Yeah, I can show you a couple messages on Messenger that you've talked to me a couple times.
Once. Do you have a permit for your driveway?
I don't need one, sir. You know why I don't need one? Because your POA hasn't had one for over 12 years, and I can't comply to a permit and build a driveway to any standard when your POA continues to violate that same exact permit that they should have for using the right-of-way.
No, you made a driveway, you put-
Yes, I did. I did that for the county, who said that I could put that in for my ingress and egress, because they had no control over this POA.
And then it washed away.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Four or five times, sir.
Because you didn't make it big enough.
No, sir, I've made it big enough. What it is, is that the culmination of diverted water is way more than the excess that should be flowing down that street. That's the problem, sir, that they've taken water that should be flowing south to Bill Williams National Wildlife Refuge, and they've turned it west to go north, so that it can go out Lake Havasu National Wildlife Refuge. Would you like me to show you the example? I have a picture of that.
I'll pass.
Yeah, I bet you will.
You need to quit defaming my wife.
Sir, your wife is using the POA to sell property?
She does not.
Yes, she does. It says right there, expert PO, expert property real estate agent for the POA. It says that on her pay board.
Was it appropriate for you to send my wife a Messenger message at 6:00 in the morning?
Which one? Which one, sir? That you're, about your son? Is that what you're concerned with, sir?
Right, where you said that-
You're relying to the people in the county, sir, telling them that you're a great father and a great husband, when the reality is that you're probably not really the greatest father on the earth.
Mr. Chairman, I think we're moving past what the-
Want to keep going there? I'll keep going.
Chair, keep running.
Keep running. What else you want to talk about, Mr. Gould?
Don't mind if I have some order for a second, county attorney.
Mr. Chairman, we have an agenda item that's on the public roadways, Stagecoach Properties Association, the drainage. That's the agenda item. We do need to stick to that agenda item for the public notice.
Mr. Chairman, can I just kind of wrap this up?
You started.
Yeah, thanks. And I brought it up, because I wanted to hear everyone's part, and what I'm hearing is that this is a civil issue, and whether the county is brought in when that happens, that's a whole other issue. So, I think that's what we've learned from all of this, that there seems like there's a lot of blame to go around, but something needs to be, because it's only going to get worse, and I don't want this to happen here all the time. So, I suggest that you and the people who have been hurt by this, to do what you have to do legally.
And I understand that, Ms. Angus. What I would say is that I expect the county to levy the penalties and the remediation, and then that would make our move going forward to the courts a cleaner move. They are in violation, we know they're in violation, but without enforcement of penalties or remediation, why do I have to spend thousands of dollars to prove what you guys already know? They're wrong. They're in violation. Why should I spend all that money?
Can I ask Tim, can I ask Tim a question? So, the accusation is that they've been out of compliance and in violation for many years? Is that true?
Once the Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Angus, once the floodplains were recorded and put in place back in 2008, generally, any work within a floodplain requires a floodplain use permit. The question of whether they're in violation, our ordinance actually exempts roadways, culverts, and bridges from floodplain use permits. So, it could be argued that they have not been in violation, because that is work within a roadway. Because it's a private entity doing the grading, we recommend that they apply for and obtain a floodplain use permit.
It's recommended, but it's not required. At what point does it become required?
It could be, we saw that it was the best practice, because it's a private entity doing the work. It could be argued either way, whether, because they're a private entity doing work on a roadway, that they have to do it or not, but because of that gray area, we recommend that they do it, and they agree that it would be in their best interest. Once they applied for and received that floodplain use permit, they are now in compliance. So, there's no, they are no longer in violation or in possible violation of that.
Right, but once they get the permit, then you guys go and inspect.
Then they, as long as-
That seems to be the missing link here, is the inspection.
So, so, once they receive the permit, we provided instruction on how they needed to maintain those floodplains, how they should grade the road within that floodplain. So, they've got miles of roadway that they maintain, we're only concerned with those areas that go through the floodplain. And the remainder of the area that they maintain, Building Department has not historically required a grading permit for grading of road.
Okay, so you've gone out there since all of this came to our attention. Do you, in your professional opinion, believe things are going well out there?
So, personally, I have not been out there. My flood control district engineer has been out there. He inspected it along with Mr. Ware, and based on his observations, and I've got him here in case I'm speaking incorrectly for him, but based on his observations, he felt that the floodplains were constructed properly and that they met the requirements of the floodplain use permit.
Okay, all right, that's it, that's all.
You don't need any action.
There's no action.
All right, we'll take a five-minute break.